Hi, to agents. Indivisible with the.
Okay, I guess I'll do the roll call. Libby? Ryan?
Here.
I'm here. Vanessa?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
We have a quorum. I need a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Before you do, we may need to add Alex had sent over an ordinance amending the park in this defined schedule. In case you do pass the Dora on the first reading or pass the first reading, then we need to also add that ordinance as well. And that was ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash twelve B.
Okay, so that would be the first reading on it as well?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda adding first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four twelve B amending the park. These.
Oh, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. And a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. New business. Discuss option of moving forward with the plan of the trail along East Broadway. Joe?
Yes. The MPO reached out to me and they're wanting to fund the plan and design for the trail along Broadway out front here. As you know, the Fortville Pike Maple Street Trail is section one. The one that's not completed yet along two hundred is section two. I want it to school is section three. So what they're proposing here is sections four, five, and six. Unfortunately, the colors don't show up very well. The numbers don't on this printout, but the yellow is first phase. Phase four, red would be the second phase. That would, maybe I should explain it a little bit better, but the first phase, I guess phase four would be the trail in front of the town hall here, which started Madison Street and go to Ohio Street on the south side. And it would also include the crosswalks for State Road thirteen. Phase five would be along Ohio Street connected down and it would tie in where Bill Camus has already got his trail put in, which would tie Windstone into the town limits. And then phase four would be along Broadway from Ohio Street to Flint Boulevard, the first entrance into the Windstone subdivision. They were wanting to fund the study. It's a ninety-ten split, so the town would be on the hook for ten percent. They would pick up ninety percent. Think they've got a little money left and they, it's not enough to do phase two of the trailer. We'd be moving on that. But what they do have, they still wanted to give it to Fortville and see if we wanted to use it for that study, do that plan, put the plan together. And I told them that was going to take a council's decision because.
Is the green supposed to be phase six? Or is that also face, is there two phases first?
Uh, no, it would be six.
You can't see it. It's not very good.
Does it?
Yeah. You said four and it says.
It should be six.
Which, which part is?
The green.
Six.
Phase six.
It's in the verbiage in the text.
So when?
Number three, Mount Vernon Trail, phase six, Ohio Street. Ten fifty to Flint Boulevard.
Would that, when would, when would they do that?
Uh, the work would come later. We could either, what, what this does, it helps us to have a plan. They go ahead and do the red flag investigation and environmental, take care of all that. They have the plan put together for us and then say, for instance, this property next door develops. That plan is on the shelf and that gives Adam something to use for that developer to say, you need to build this. If it goes in front of the property that they're on the hook to build that. There's a possibility that if it's already planned and designed that the crosswalk at Madison Street, if the state gets to a point where they've got a little bit of money left over for a project, they might go ahead and move that up. Right now, there is probably ten years before it happens. So. And then they will, they propose to award us funds for construction in the future, but right now we're only looking at the planning and the construction may not take place for several years, or we let the developers build it as we go.
How much does it cost the town? Did you say nothing?
It's ten percent.
Ten percent. How much?
He doesn't really have an estimate on it right now.
Is there any way he can give us an estimate?
I think he said that, well, I think he said that he wants to go ahead and put it in the stip earmark four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us for this project. So ten percent of that. But that doesn't, not till we go out to bid, we won't know what the actual.
That's to build it or is that just to do the interior work of?
That's all the environment, the design and red flag investigation and everything it takes to get ready to go out to bid.
The town would be four forty-five thousand dollars.
Correct. If that's what the price comes in.
When's he need to know by?
Um, we'll need to know this month. I mean, if you have further questions, we can, we can ask and bring it back.
And that's MPOs, the guy from Madison Central Government.
Madison County Council.
I'm sorry.
He suggested it or? Fritz, what were you saying was the involvement of the MPO? Was this who suggested it?
Yes.
You know, Joe, I was wondering, my, my question was if, if MPO is proposing to go in on and, you know, go in on making sidewalks, right? That's what, you know, essentially that's what this is. But we'd still be on the hook for maybe fifty thousand dollars. Where do you think this area falls in your priorities compared to other parts of Fortville that could have or need sidewalks?
I don't know that we'll get funding for sidewalks in town. The trails that are connecting the communities together is where they'll, they'll be quicker to donate money or or give us money, grant us money, I guess. Projects, because I know what they're looking at is long term. They want to tie Pendleton Ingalls and Fortville all together. So tying in that trail here as much as they can. And then in the future, we'd like to also look at going toward McCordville.
That's my question. So where else, what else do you think our fifty thousand dollars could get us sidewalks in town? Do you have another recommendation about where that money could be spent making similar sidewalks? Or is that such a small amount that that doesn't make a sidewalk? I don't know about sidewalk math or budgeting.
I guess the way I look at it is fifty thousand dollars, it really doesn't go a long way on sidewalks. But if you can take that fifty thousand dollars and leverage an additional four hundred and fifty thousand, you get more for your money. So if we were to take just that fifty thousand and build walks, we're, we're going to probably replace, you know, maybe one side of a couple of blocks or something like.
Yeah, a block or two. And is anybody else offering to help make sidewalks anywhere else? I'm just trying to make a comparison to see. Is this it? Is it like a zero or a one choice? Or are there other options that we should be considering?
This is the only thing that they've offered is the funding for.
Because it just seems kind of like it's going out of town. I guess it would connect that, the neighborhood.
Yeah, there's that.
Yeah.
Kind of bring them into town.
Are they, are they walking from there into town, I guess?
They would. They probably will come down.
And connect those folks to town.
I think that's, that's how the business is. I would think in town to bring more people in, you know, to be able to walk in. I would, I mean, I'd read my guess. I don't know.
How much would be developed even as the thirteen goes through, we just make the developer build all the way up to the to the town hall?
Right.
And then we just have them pay for that. And then who, the new gas station?
Yep, we'll have them put the trail along Broadway and on Ohio Street.
The new gas station will probably put that in. Then whoever develops that corner can do that part. I think the most difficult part's probably going to be buying out all these people along Broadway. There's a lot of properties there. Do we have to buy right away?
Um, I don't know what the current right away for the highway project is down through there. But if there's additional right away needed, we would have to purchase.
We'd have to purchase it.
Yeah. But then they also fund that, like they did on the other trails, the MPO awards funds to help purchase right away.
This is just for them to earmark the money, right?
Pretty much, yeah. And NDOT would have to create a PO, give it a designation number. Uh, but they won't do that until they hear back from the MPO and hear that the town is in favor of the project.
I think it's a good idea.
I just, I, I don't know. I just need more information, I guess, before I make a decision. Um, I did not, I did not know it was going to be forty-five thousand dollars tonight.
Well, it won't be tonight. It'll probably be sometime in the spring before.
But are we okaying the forty-five thousand tonight? Is that what I'm asking?
We don't, we don't have an actual number, do we?
We don't really have a number. I mean, we're just.
Till it goes out.
They just need some kind of confirmation that we want to proceed with the project. That's.
Making a commitment though. It's more like, it's like an open, it's a blank deck.
Yeah, it could be fifty thousand.
But I mean, we still have to tell them that we want to.
Can they give us a closer number?
Sure, I'll be happy to go back and ask them for that.
I'm inclined to agree. I mean, that, that's why I had the similar questions. If it's going to cost us some chunk of money, is there something else we might want to be doing with it instead? Or to Fritz's point, you know, somebody else might be able to pay for these things. So it'd be better to know.
Well, I think, I think what Joe said, tell me if I'm wrong. What I understood was that we're okaying for the engineering to be done. So then when these other developers come in, it's already planned. And Adam can say, this is what you need to do. And he has proof of it that it's been a planned sidewalk. And which helps back the town to be able to tell the developer, this is what we want. So I look at it as, you know, what Fritz is saying too, that these developers coming in along Broadway, it will be their responsibility. But we've actually got the plans to show that.
Plan is already in place. But we'd be committing to the whole cost of the whole construction project, right?
No, right now, we're only, this forty-five thousand would go towards the engineering.
Oh, that's just.
Yeah, this is just to get the plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I think it's a good idea just to have that.
He said that they were looking to earmark for us, but it didn't mean I'd be anywhere near that number.
And it's MPO engineering?
No. MPO funding.
Oh.
We'll have to do our FPs, go out and request for proposals to get engineering firms to come in and bid on it. And then they'll have to be scored. And then we select according to their proposal and their scores.
The only, I, I could see where we could hook, the red would be easy to do portion. Because it's just there and came, Bill Camus has already hooked all this up.
A lot of that's already within the.
Yeah. So it's already good to go. And then we just have to paper this amount and let a developer along here uh, do that portion.
But, but this is only, but Fritz, you're, you're talking about building all of those? Because this is just for engineering, right?
Yeah, I know. I know that. I know that. Yes.
I didn't realize it first, so sorry. Okay.
Need a motion?
No.
No? You just need to know we're going to do it?
Well, they wanted some sort of a head nod, I guess. I mean, I don't.
I'm nodding my head. I've got a head nod.
But I, and I would be happy to bring back more information if, if you need it, so.
A bit, a little bit closer to the money, you know, how much it's going to cost, but yeah.
See what we can come up with.
I definitely like it though.
Okay, old business. Second reading, no salary ordinance, twenty twenty-four eleven A.
Okay, this is the same ordinance I brought to you last week, with the exception of where the council decided to not give themselves an increase. So that was removed. So everything else is pretty much as you saw the last time.
Everybody okay with?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve second reading of salary ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash eleven A.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We all need to sign this. Okay. Next up, we have the to consider resolution twenty twenty-four twelve A amending the employee handbook.
Okay, this was brought up at the last council meeting as well. As far as making some amendments for employee retention. Um, the police department years ago had given up their longevity in order to get the nineteen seventy-seven Police and Fire Pension Fund. But what they're asking now is to be able to be given that longevity back now that we can afford it. And then also the personal time that the police department gets now, the PTO would be increased from forty-eight hours every six months to eighty-four every six months. And you've got a copy of the resolution in front of you. I think most of you've got it's two pages here where I just marked up in red so you can see what the changes are. Uh, you were emailed the entire document, but we didn't want to kill a bunch of trees, so I think there may be one whole set there that's, that's got to be attached to the resolution.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twelve A amending the employee handbook.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Another signature. I sometimes don't. Okay, next up, we have the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four twelve A establishing the Dora.
Okay, this has been brought up several times. The ordinance that's been prepared here has been sent out to council. I don't know if you guys want to make any adjustments. We can do that before the next reading, if you like. There's been two maps. It includes the Dora area that's been proposed. Uh, in this resolution, it includes both of those options. We can take that out, take one of them out before the final adoption. But one of them includes Landmark Park. That'd be option two. And option one does not. It's kind of hard to see the shading.
And it includes, it includes that block from Stat to Church Street on Main two. So.
I got a question. We're on Landmark Park. Should that go, does that go all the, are we going to use the creek as the boundary?
The way it reads is it goes to the north boundary of the landmark park.
Of the creek, okay, that makes sense. Because they got stuff going on.
That's the way I read it.
Gotcha. So the, the list of the business names on here, we can, we will verify that before the second reading, right? Is that how I understand?
Yeah, if, if we need to. This is the first time I've seen a ordinance for a door and I didn't realize that each business had to be.
Well, just because the business is on here, that mean they have to do it. It means that we're approving him to be able to do it.
Alex said that we would be no.
Right.
Right, okay.
I assume Alex got all these contacts for these businesses and I assume he just got that from who currently has liquor license in the area?
I think so. That's what he said in the email. So what happens? So, so technically then you don't have to have a list of all those that are participating in the door that goes to alcohol, tobacco? Or do you?
I think that's what.
You have to have at least one on the list. I think if you, or if you put them on the list, then they can go to, to get it approved if they want to. If they, they aren't on the list, then they would, then you presumably have to admit the ordinance to have it.
So after we approve the door, then they have to individually go and have it approved?
They gotta get their license. Yeah.
Well, I mean, they already have.
Well, they, I think there's.
Admit, you know, do some kind of.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
They can't do it.
Okay. I see. Okay. So there is a step for them that they have to complete after this, okay? And I would imagine when we contact, if, if they contact them, then they'll know what that is, that they have to have. I think everything else looks okay on it from what I've read. Can't see anything that.
I have to.
Yeah, I do too.
I like including Landmark Park. I don't see any reason not to.
I had a pretty lengthy discussion about that and I think everybody kind of felt that way. That we're here at that meeting.
Most of the doors that I visited did have a park um, included in their Dora.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I have anything that they want to change or anything that they.
Just if you're going to make a motion to specify which option.
Yeah.
Or is it matter?
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the first ruling of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash twelve A establishing the Fortville.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Then I think that means we got to do the.
Yeah. Yeah, let me see. I don't have to, I don't have to sign this, do I, do Brad? Do we have to? Okay.
The changes have already been made in this ordinance, right? The park ordinance that we're getting ready to.
Yeah, this is an amendment.
Okay. Uh, next up, we need to consider amending the ordinance for alcoholic beverages in town parks and related penalty schedule.
Be the ordinance that's been prepared for you there, ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash twelve B. This is due to the Dora and adjusting the alcoholic beverages permitted in the park and, like you say, assigning the penalties for violating.
But what exactly are we changing here?
Um, our current ordinance says no alcoholic beverages in the park, period. So what this does, it allows the alcoholic beverages, if it's and it relates back to the door. So if it's during the time that the door is in place, eleven A to eleven P, then it's approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments, amendments to the ordinance governing alcoholic beverages in town parks and the related penalty schedule, ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash twelve B.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. So just so the public knows, I guess we didn't really read what was on the door here, but we can read it too when we finalize it. But it's for Monday through, Monday through, it's the entire week. Basically, eleven to eleven.
Year round, isn't it?
Year round, yeah. Okay. Joe, I guess, on to department report.
You've also got a calendar for the upcoming meetings for twenty twenty-five in your folder. Um, if you have an opportunity to look that over, I think everybody, as far as the other department heads and roads have been looking at it. Um, if the dates are good with everybody still and you want to continue with the six thirty meetings on the first and third Mondays, with the exception of holidays, that's what we'll do. And with the ordinances that you've passed this evening and approving this calendar will allow me to start putting together all the time sheets for everybody for next year.
So do you need a motion to approve the calendar or?
Uh, I think as long as you guys are okay with it. If anybody's got any comments or anything that we need to change, we or you can make a motion, it can't hurt.
I'm good with it. Or I can make a motion. You still looking?
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five public meetings and office closure calendar.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Thank you.
Anything else?
We had a meeting this morning with Waste Management. I know that we've been having some struggles getting things picked up and getting them to understand and getting customers to understand. They've actually switched around the way they're picking up our heavy trash items. They're now going to move the heavy items to the last Friday of the month. And they're wanting the customers to contact them to notify them that there's something to pick up. They're also wanting to try to get everybody to sign up to go to a portal to, um, you know, sign in if they have a heavy trash item that they need to pick up, if they need a second tote or anything like that to kind of get that communication between them and the customer direct. So they're going to be rolling out some brochures. We asked them to put some stuff together for us so we can share. So we're, that's what we're looking at from them.
So you're saying essentially it's an opt-in now?
What's that?
You're saying that it's changed from an every, you know, every month, no matter what, to an opt-in, you have to request the heavy pickup and they'll.
Now, right now, we currently, the way it's written up in the contract is they'll pick up one heavy item per month.
Right.
And that's, that's the, it's what they did before, but before it was always the last pickup day of the month, which is Wednesday. Now they're running separate trucks. So they're not using the rig or truck that picks up trash and garbage to pick up mattresses and furniture.
Right, and it's going, it's going to be on a different day, but additionally, you have to request for that. Right, and it's gonna, it's gonna be on a different day, but additionally, you have to request for that truck to buy your house. Where, whereas before you could have just put it in.
Yeah.
Now you have to self-identify as a heavy trash person. Cause I don't know, you know, okay.
Up and down every street, so they would like to know where they're going.
Sounds like a good idea.
So, we're, we hope that we're gonna get some better communication back and forth with CGS. And, uh, I think they've hired some new people and see if we can't, uh, get back on the ball.
How long is that contract that we have currently?
Uh, it's a five-year contract and, uh, I wanna say when's it, two twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Yeah.
We just signed it, I think, last year.
Yeah, so we got. Oh, I think we are. I bet it's a year and a half, time flies, man.
Well, yeah, it might be a year and a half, it might be.
Was there an issue with them that we're getting over or something?
No, they were okay. The, the big fish are eating up all the little fish again.
Last thing for you, Steve. Disappointing, I know we, uh, applied for the community crossings, we were awarded that for the Helmcrest subdivision, which is awesome news. Um, we did apply for the, um, preemptive devices for the traffic lights, for the police and fire. Uh, we were not awarded those funds. They did tell us to, uh, please try again next round and, um, they'll see what they can do to fund us at that point. But at this point, we, we were denied.
What was that for again?
Preempted devices goes on the traffic light, so when the fire trucks and the police cars come through, it'll automatically.
Ah.
Set it so they can go through.
Yeah.
So they're not setting in traffic.
They're expensive.
Well, I mean, ours wasn't gonna be all that expensive because our boxes, the, uh, traffic lights are already set up for it. All the control boxes have got room in it and they said it would be, uh, breeze to install them, so. I guess it could be a whole lot more expensive.
Yeah.
But that's all I have this evening, unless you have something for me.
Can we get a, a, a update on BP?
Uh, I don't have any information on it. Last I heard is, uh, I don't know that Endot has got the drawings yet to start reviewing. If I'd have thought about it, I'd have reached out to Endot to see if they had plans in their hands yet. But as of last, we heard that Endot was still waiting on drawings.
Cause, uh, we sent them a letter saying that we'd allow them to open if they wanted to come to the planning commission and.
They had a lot of hate to jump through, they had a lot of conditions. Part of it was they had to have approved plans through Endot and they had to have the contractor under contract to do the work. And if Endot doesn't have the plans yet, they can't, they're nowhere near them.
All right, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Adam is not here. Heath is not here. Patrick is not feeling well. Uh, there's nobody here. So we're moving to public comment, sir.
I'm pretty easy tonight, Bob Starett. Um, first off, I want to say I'm all in favor of the trail system going out to Windstone and down Ohio. I walk Camus's trail every day and on through Windstone. And I, I've always felt like Windstone felt like they were in their own little town. And I think this would absolutely help tie them into it and make them feel a little more into it. Plus, I'll represent everybody east of Ohio Street tonight. We all agree that that would be a great thing to do and you can come through my front yard, which I think you would. Um, I did have a question, I think you mentioned the gas station. Is there a gas station going in at Ohio and Broadway?
Supposed to be.
Has it been approved? I mean, I, I've heard that, but.
Yeah, it came, it came.
Everything's been approved, they've, um, applied for funding for the environmental phase one. Uh, they've done that, I don't know if they're doing a phase two or not. But, um, yeah, we keep looking for them to submit plans anytime.
Okay, is this something like within the next year or five years? I mean.
We've probably been looking at it for a year.
We thought they started this year, but.
We would have thought it had been up by now.
I had heard that at least a year ago that that was happening, I just wondered, you know.
Yeah, they bought the property, so it's.
Okay.
What, what gas station, which brand?
I think it's Marathon.
Yeah.
I think it's a Marathon, is it Marathon, Joe?
Um, I can't tell you exactly, cause I know that, uh, the company had thrown out one name and Adam asked if they could use a different brand because we've already got one of those right here.
So it's not like Buc-E's, okay? So we can put the Facebook questions to rest anyway, sorry, Bob.
The coin's not that big.
And, oh, finally, is Endot gonna do something about the lanes down in front of the Dollar General? Is that actually gonna?
Plans, they supposedly they were gonna do it last Monday, but I think the weather's what's holding them up.
Okay.
For the weather to re-stripe some stuff.
Aye. That's what I was told, so.
Joe, did, did Endot ever talk with you about why they thought of that design in the first place that eliminates the go-forward lane?
It had to be oversight, cause it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, okay.
That wasn't a Endot thing, that was their consultant to put the drawings together.
The, the, the Lock, the Lockmuila Group or, because Ja- James Kalanis, you know, I, I mentioned it to him at the ribbon cutting and I was like, oh, you know, what about that thing? And, and he said, it's a compliant design. And I said, how? How, like either you built it not to the design or the design's not compliant or the standards are no good. But we, we didn't wind up having a full discussion about it.
It's called the way it's painted out, but, uh, they've already agreed to sort of come back and correct it, so. We're just waiting for that to happen.
Yeah, uh, you know, a quick, quick point on that note, I, I was gonna mention it during your comments, I, I skipped it though. You know, an interesting thing at these new crosswalks at the light. You know, a couple of meetings ago, I was saying, you know, these crosswalks aren't very effective, people aren't stopping at them, the ones that aren't at the light. And I haven't tried them again lately because, you know, people don't really stop yet. So I'll, you know, I'll wait till the end of the winter maybe, but the, the crosswalks that are at the lights, there's a left turn at the same time that the crosswalk light goes on. So you have to be really careful that there are cars that aren't trying to turn, that haven't noticed that you're walking out into the intersection. So that's kind of a strange, um.
I think it's pretty common, I see that a lot, like if I'm getting ready to turn and you make a right-hand turn, not only in Fourville, but other communities. Uh, if there's somebody coming across the crosswalk, you have to stop and let them clear before you.
It's like that in downtown Indianapolis too.
It's seen in both ways, but, but the crosswalk during the turn lane, you know, during the optional turn lane is more like in super walkable cities where there's loads of pedestrians crossing, like in downtown, where there's like loads of people walking everywhere. Where there, you can't miss them, so I don't know, I just thought that was kind of odd.
Yeah, I got hit down there while crossing.
In downtown, indeed?
I got hit by Lincoln. Sure did. My four-inch heels.
Hmm.
It was a lot of fun. So. Things happen.
Sounds like your.
I lived through that story.
Yeah, really. All right, well, uh, all right, well, thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Toasty, have anything? Okay, town council comment?
Libby? I don't have anything.
Uh, me neither.
I do not?
Hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving.
Here's, here's a, here's another wild story, everybody, from another part of the country. The town of Edison, New Jersey, their town council banned American flags at their meetings. And then somebody showed up and waved a small American flag just in protest of it, and then security hauled him away. So we should be very thankful for whatever we're doing here compared to that, so that's all I have. And don't make the screen do that kaleidoscope thing, Andy.
That's why I used to work down, I worked downtown.
Yep, but let's discuss the hit by a car thing.
I worked the stock market down there. That's all I used to wear.
No, that.
Until I couldn't wear them anymore.
No, no, Ryan, that's the way, but the other part.
That was before they wore tennis shoes to work like they do now.
How hard did you get hit?
I got hit hard, hard enough to throw me across the side of his car. It was a Lincoln Continental.
Was there, was that a turn signal while you were crossing?
No, it was just a crosswalk right on the circle.
Wow.
There was, yeah, people, pedestrian had right of way. I was with some other people too, but it's a good thing it hit me instead of them. He did more damage to his car than he did to me.
Well, while he's waiting, now, um, I, I, I don't know if I mentioned it, but I went to the H Hancock County Economic Development, um, two weeks ago and, um, told them what, what was all going on here in Fortville. Um, and Randy Sherrill was kind of shocked that Laugh backed out and he didn't know anything about it. And, um, so there, at least I told them that, you know, that's, can be redeveloped if, um, if, um, we get some developers coming to Hancock County.
What's your takeaway about that, Chris?
Pardon me?
What's your, what's your takeaway about that and was just that you were surprised that they didn't know?
Yeah, I was surprised they didn't know that, uh, that Randy Sherrill didn't know, but that's fine. He says he'll, he'll keep that on top of his radar.
You think the Hancock County Economic Development would know about economic development comings and goings, right?
Right, but that's, I'm gonna start going each month, so I'll let them know, um, what's going on here in town. Thank you.
You good? Okay.
The, um, the.
The motion to approve and sign vouchers.
Answers the Chinese company.
Make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifteen.
Second.
There was no public comment that went away?
Oh, oh, oh.
Bob came up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Bob came up, made a public comment.
Did you make it?
Uh.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Yeah.
Was there a public comment?
No, he didn't answer.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, if he's not there to hear it, then.
Where did, did you, where did, did you scout him?